To tonight's City of Gilbert Special City Council Meeting. Today's Tuesday, December 12th, 2023 at 6:01 PM. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing for the 2023 budget and tax levy. The Gilbert City Council will hold the public truth and taxation hearing to receive input on the proposed budget and tax levy for taxes payable in 2024. This meeting is being held here at the Gilbert City Hall Council Chambers. At this time, I would like to open it up for public comment. If anybody wishes to speak, please step up to the podium and state your name, address, and we'll...
Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We'll take quick roll call.
Mayor. Councillor Pontenin.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councillor Polis.
Here.
Councillors Skandic and Heitman are excused, are absent with notice. I also have city attorney, city engineer, operations director, and clerk.
Now, I'll open it up for public input for anybody that wishes to speak.
Before you do, can we do the pledge? Pledge allegiance.
Is that at our regular, we just asked, is that at our regular meeting? And this is a special meeting?
Oh, sorry.
Yep.
Otherwise, yes, we would do it.
Just one question. And I just, should Jill tell them what it's going to be before they have comments? Because they may not have comments once they hear what it's going to be.
Yeah, that's true. Um, if I can find it here again. What I will give you guys before comment, I said my apologies. Please bear with me. What I'll read to you is our proposed operational expenses and what we've pretty much worked on, on our levy. So, our operational expenses are going to be $2,833,701. Our depth services, which are our fire truck, the snowplow, mower, and debt that the city has accrued is $68,212. I know the fire truck's more than that, but that's our payment. The library is $103,500. We have no, zero dollars for capital projects. For a total expense of $3,005,413. We are, we originally set the levy at 34% because our budget wasn't, or our audit wasn't complete, and we didn't know specific numbers. And without that, and the fire truck, snowplow, and wage increases, we set it high. And so, everybody knows that we set it high because we know we can bring it down. But if we started it too low, we couldn't bring it back up. That's why it was set at 34%. I understand people's taxes, I got mine, it was at 37 and a half. Well, that extra three and a half percent is the county tax and the school board, or the school tax. So, we set the preliminary at 34%. We did have several meetings, and we were able, what we feel is we can bring that levy down to zero. So, we've had long discussions on that, and reason for that is, is we increased base rates and usage fees. If anybody was aware, when we got our budget back, a lot of those areas, our usage fees for the electric, sewer, and water usage was in the red. So, we have to increase those rates to balance that out. So, that's why we in, was it April, May, we did our first increase in the usage fees and base rates? And we mentioned then that that was going to be like a two-third part of the raises. We increased the rest last month. So, you'll see the increase, I think, beginning of January, in those fees again. And with those rates, we believe we can come up with the city's budget for 2024.
Mayor. We also seen a 40% increase in our LGA funding from the state, so that helped tremendously as well. We're at the end of 2022, they expected those numbers to fall. They recalculated, the state worked on them, and they were able to raise some of those. So, that gave us a little more cash, too, and we expect to see that same increase in going forward. Never a guarantee, but we're hoping that they're going to keep them the same.
Correct.
Did you also want to mention about the campground? That we're using a lot of campground profit to keep the taxes down, so.
Exactly. And the campground is a main source of revenue for the City of Gilbert. It's, it's been doing fabulous every year. We were able to use some of that funding to, or revenue to help offset the cost. So, we, we, all those things that I mentioned is what we were able to discuss and chip the levy down to zero. Now, is there anybody knowing that? Have any questions? Please let us know.
Can we talk about personal tax, property tax numbers in the city?
Absolutely, you can talk.
Our taxes on our house last year were $820.16. This year, proposed coming in is $2,045.89. That's 205% increase. I did build a shop, 900 square feet, but it doesn't have plumbing, it's a shop. So, I can understand a little bit of an increase, but to go 200%, or more than 200% higher makes crazy.
Yep.
So, what he just explained was that, that's your primary of the 34% that we set originally? So, what you all guys got in the mail is the primary, if the levy was set at 34%, but it was not, it's actually going to be set at zero, so that will not actually be the accurate number.
Yep, so.
What will my accurate number be? Because at 34%.
It would be the three and a half percent that the county and the school raise.
And if your property value rises.
Yeah, if your, market value of your house went up this year, you'll be paying taxes on the county aspect of it, not the city.
Okay, because that just seems like that's.
That seems high.
Our, our taxes for everybody, or everything included, over doubled.
Right.
And I thought you were only supposed to increase taxes a certain amount per year.
This happened to me last year. It's your market value. If your market value goes up a lot, you're going to get a higher tax. So, are you taking that into consideration? Pardon?
Wouldn't everybody's, how, property values in the city go up to the same amount?
No. No, that, that'll vary. In my understanding, they don't get to every property every year. So, yours might have been this year, and it may be somebody else's next year to catch up with the county. The city does not assess those.
It's supposed to be every three years.
The county assesses the property.
It's every three years unless you have a permit where you've done improvements? Sorry. Then they will come out, as they do require the city to send in a copy of every permit that is executed from the city.
Yeah, because she came by and looked at the, at the thing, so I wasn't finished with last year, but I wouldn't think that that would double my property value.
Now, are you going off that pre-notice that you received this last month of what?
From the county.
Yeah.
Went from 800 to 2,000.
Yeah, that's because the county used that 34% plus their three and a half percent.
Right, that, that 34% of 800 will bring me up to 9,000 or 1100.
Then I, then my guess would be your property was evaluated higher.
All right, is there a way I can find out how they, it's right at the top, so your estimated market value from last year to this year should be right on top of your bill.
Yep, and if you have questions, contact the county on that, county assessor's office.
Yeah. Forgot to move.
Mr. Paul.
Is it now?
Okay, so do you know the date?
Mayor Councillors, I just have a question, not so much about the property tax itself, but about our budget. Just wondering, I know that, you know, that's what you use for the basis of our property taxes. I'm just wondering when that budget might be public for everybody to review?
Wait, once we vote it in, I believe it can become public.
It will be posted.
And it'll be posted.
Or will it be posted? We'll put it on our website, we'll also put it on both boards, and we can give you a copy to be like.
You're welcome.
I can't do the forename because I don't have any links. But I, my name is Dennis Prashern, and I have 10 acres of property within the city limits of Gilbert, and I've had it for, since 1988. The value at that time was $1,600. The value for next year now will be $38,400. And my city tax, I realize the county does the appraisal for the taxes, but my city tax will go from $377 to the City of Gilbert to 584. I have no fire number because I don't have an address there. All the communication with the City of Gilbert comes to my home in Fayette Township because we have no access to my property. I can't get insurance on it. I have no city amenities at all. But I'd like to have, and I shoot at that Sam, I'd like to get water and sewer and a power line and rope into my property. Tell me, what am I paying for to the City of Gilbert? What am I going to get? I haven't received a thing yet. I didn't expect to, but this is ridiculous. This, this funding is outrageous for what? Just because I'm in the city? I'm on the edge of the landfill, right at the very edge of the Virginia property, and I was done a hell of a lot better over there than I am for the City of Gilbert. I need some answers. I want to know what's going on and why we've been the victim so many times of owning this piece of property? So, like I said, I can't even get a fire number because I have no access. And even when the city had their own assessor, I had her up there, and she hadn't walked in, and we didn't like it at all. But that's the price we go in, one mile from the landfill on homemade thread. So, that's how we access. But you have all this access, you've got a new business going up in Gilbert, and they put water and sewer line in there last week. How the hell do they get service when I can't even give an address? I just need some answers.
Have you approached the city with that before? This is the first I'm hearing of it, and I.
Different times, many councils, I mean, this is the first time.
Right.
And I'm trying it again because I need, I never got any answer left, though. They said, "Well, that's the county, now let's deal with the county." Well, I'm dealing with the county the best I can, but I also want to know what I'm going to get from the city. I'm paying the city tax like everybody else here to that property, but I think it's highly unfair. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Sam will pin that. Let's see what's going on. I'm not sure myself.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I have a piece of property, I built a house, my name is Anton Yuv. I have a house 702 Sun Street. My taxes, when I first came to town, were probably $600, and I was just on the land. Right now, I think I'm in the top 25%. I'm looking at 5,500 dollars for taxes. And I have a piece of property in my house, estimated at about $27,000. My question to you is, please keep going, I have to pay the fees that I have to pay for my taxes, the fees that I have to pay for water and money. In a matter of a few years, it's going to be a house and nothing's on for me. When is this going to stop? This is crazy. It's basically, if we take care of our houses, we make it look nice, we get taxed. If I took my sign off my house, let type that go, my taxes, my taxes will go. I don't understand that. It's crazy. You're going to drive people out of this town, huh? We're out of, into the town. The housing market in here for building, there isn't that many houses being built here. We have beautiful locks to build, and all it's building, molten iron is crazy, dude. Everything is going up there. And I just can't see this. And it's, if someone could explain to me what I'm getting for this, $3,500 to the city, what am I getting? That everybody else is getting $500, $600, $100. Bob, I think you said this last time in the council, 25% of the people take 75% of taxes in.
It's something like that. That, that, that's why we got this down to zero. I feel your pain, I pay the same, in my view, outrageous taxes, too. And that's why we got it down to zero. And, and next year, there may be other cuts that we can keep it at zero or maybe go into the negative. It's a work in progress.
Isn't there a tax that you could put on everybody so everybody pays?
That's where your fees, that's where your fees come in. And that's, then you level off the field. Because if everybody gets feed the same, you're not paying that 35, and the next guy's paying 300 for the same service. And that's why we're stressing the fees over taxes.
Well, not, not only that, but we're bringing in commercial properties to help lower taxes. We're even giving away properties for a dollar just to help build.
Commercial property, I paid more city tax than five establishments that time. My sidewalks don't get low, the snow doesn't get to me every time I hit snows. I mean, I pay taxes on our business in all night, and our taxes aren't cheap like that. But that's a business tax.
Right.
A lot of these places in here, and maybe they're going to get mad, but a lot of them aren't being their fair share. I mean, that's the bad thing, is no one's being their fair share. A lot, 75% of the people aren't being their fair share. And why is it coming down to the people that made the house, made the town look nice with nice houses and everything? There's a housing town, they're not going to be here today, that has no water, no sewer, nothing. The county paid Paul's Road $11,000 for taxes. Any owned businesses in town, too? What do they get out of that? I mean, I know it's a tough situation, but somewhere along the lines, that's all.
I agree.
I agree, and I wish it would, but the economies, we got to pay the same price. The city pays the same price to do business, to keep the city functioning, and to pay that, it's the burden on the taxpayers, I know.
Well, I know that.
And that's just.
But the bad thing is, is, like I said, why is so many people paying $200, $300, $400 to the city? They're getting the same thing as I'm getting, the same exact thing, and I'm paying this much? I know that this is the inflated price right here. And 3% on my $2,700 is probably only at $3,000 just for the city tax. That, I think, is crazy. I really think that's outrageous. My, my county tax is less than the city tax. And even when I took my water and light bill and figured that out, what I use for water, sewer, electricity is cheaper than all the sewer charges. And I'm in remodeling business, and I see where houses are going. And everyone that, you made, I made comments many times, "How can you build, how could you build in Gilbert?" When you said, when I told him, "I'm building Gilbert," I said, "How can you build in Gilbert when taxes are so high? And how are these people that sell these houses in Gilbert when their taxes are $6,000, $7,000? That's a mortgage for some people. But yet, somebody can have a house that looks terrible, have a half a million dollars in the bank, and maybe it could then, and I understand that's the way the taxes are, but it's not right. There should be something for people that are paying a big run for taxes.
No, I agree, and I do feel your pain, and I wish there was a formula that could fix that.
Exactly, because my taxes, my estimate value went up $30,000, but my taxes went to $100,000. So, that's, to me, I think that's crazy. Like I said, we have property in Molten Iron, and my tax is actually going down. I mean, that's going to hurt just people who came here. You have the perfect opportunity with school property out there to put up some 55 and over houses like you did. They would be going like hotcakes, but how many, who's going to pay the taxes and stuff?
I agree.
And like Anton Yuv and I have had these discussions in the past, and, and that is the reason I got on the council four years, my first term in 15. And I'm continuing it, and I'm continuing it harder than ever because I, I know exactly where you're coming from, and, and I think I've told you a lot of these things that, that you're referring to. And, and I'm going to keep working because it is unfair, and I'm trying to make it more fair for everyone.
I mean, isn't there a Gilbert tax that you can put on that everybody's assessed $300, pays $300, and then act them in? If you have a big chunk of money, you get a rebate?
I've looked into all that, Anton. I've looked into all that, assessments and everything else. And that's a bit, part of the problem, we didn't assess this, all these improvements we did in the last three years, nobody was assessed. In the past, everybody used to be assessed for their improvements. I don't know why the council went that way. There's a lot of mistakes I saw from the previous council. I don't even really want to go there because it doesn't do any good, but the mistakes were made, and now we're trying to undo them in a way by going with a zero levy and work next year for another zero or maybe negative.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I mean, that's, that's nice to do that, not to give those taxes, but I mean, it's, it was a sticker shot, it was a sticker shot, and sure, it's a lot of people that lost, and they got this, and all of a sudden, it's, what's going on here? And I know you can't raise, if you set it at 3%, you can't go up to 5%. I know you can't do that. You know, that I know. But I mean, you should just stack that 10% and account it, and then you can go in.
But with, when we crunched those numbers, that's what we were looking at, and it was alarming. But I'm glad, once we got our audit done and we got more exact numbers, that we could cut where we had to and get it back down. And it was nice having the extra LGA funding, and so that helped. Plus, the campground funding. We didn't have to use it all, and this last year, we tapped into a lot of that revenue to pay for things, so.
Oh, I understand. But it's just frustrating, it just gets you just a little upset, and you just wonder when it's going to stop. And the tough thing is, is for some people to try to sell these houses, they don't know, they're not going to sell, they're not going to get the price that one guy entered the house. And I have the tax girl going to her house, and she wanted to go in, and I just explained to her, "Why am I going to pay taxes on stuff that I would have paid taxes on that I put in my house?" Which I think is wrong. It's just like if I parked the expensive car in front of my house in my garage, I can tax on that. And it's just, if the tax system is only wrong, it should be taxed on your house size and your property size, and go on with that.
Yep.
You're not going to change that.
No. Thank you.
I'm just going to add a little bit to what Anton said, but ours went up $37,000. We didn't do a thing to our house. We did find out that our, our taxes went up because we had a whirlpool tub in our house, and that wasn't on record. And I said, "You got to be kidding me." She said, "No." Says you had a whirlpool tub. I says, "I don't even want the damn thing, you can have it." You know, but it's, it's ridiculous, but it's kind of a double whammy, too. You know, as your taxable market value goes up, your home's debt exclusion goes down. Our home's debt exclusion went down $3,000, you know, on that server $7,000 that they increased our market value. So, I mean, it's kind of a double whammy. I asked her about that, she said, "Well, you know, Dave Littlegar, you know, maybe he can do something about it." So, I don't know if that's something that you guys have ever looked into or not, or I guess it's never been explained to me why your home's debt exclusion goes down as your market value goes up. That's all I got.
It's phased out in our houses now, yeah.
Pardon me?
It's phased out, the higher your value of your home is, you get less because they phase it on eventually. But that's, that's a state algorithm, city doesn't have any control over that.
So, it is, it is a state thing, so Dave, Dave probably would be the guy to get a hold of it. I've been told he's working on it, but it's, you know, how it can go up $37,000 and you did nothing here at all, it just, and I agree with Anton. I mean, if, if they think that house is worth that much money, you know, it's for sale, come and buy it, you know, because it ain't going to, I'm not going to get that kind of money out of it.
Right, they, they go by the comparables, you know, the market, whatever sells in an area.
Yeah.
And that's what they go by, and that's how your market is determined, your market value, by the sales in the area.
Right.
So, they determine that your house is worth this much according to the house down the block that went for that price.
And I told her, I said, "It depends on what window you look out in our house. You look out this window, and yeah. You look out the back window, and, and really? Well, you're not part of that neighborhood." I says, "I'm closer to those houses than I am those other houses. What the hell do you mean I'm not part of that neighborhood?"
I've had that exact same discussion with the assessors that you just said right now.
Yep.
And I says, "That's totally unfair."
Yep.
And I'll tell you, I've spent hours and hours talking to these assessors about these problems with these taxes. I get nowhere, but I still tell them about it. It doesn't do any good. But I, all these questions here, I've, I've went over and over and over with the assessors for hours, and I'm not exaggerating.
I went to the appeal meeting in Virginia, and I can see why people don't go. You know, it didn't bother me, but I mean, you're surrounded by 20 people. And, and you go in there and you explain what you are, they listen, they give you a set amount of time, they listen, somebody makes a motion, the other person seconded it, it's done, you know, it was a waste of time.
I did the same thing, and they almost laughed at me, and that pissed me off.
Yep. So, you're getting nowhere.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not very much personally able to live down on Morgan Court, and I heard the taxes being paid by some of the citizens in this city, I wish I had their taxes. Because our taxes are around $8,000, and I don't think there's anybody who can believe that there's a house in Gilbert that's worthy of paying $8,000 in taxes. And I think we probably are in agreement that our taxes are way out of line, particularly when we look at other communities, we know where we stand for them.
The taxes are on one side, and the flip side of that is our expenditures. And once we've acquired all the expenditures, we do have to make those payments, I understand that. So how can we reduce the debt that we have? Do we have services and resources in the community that are luxury and not in the city? Can we consider, um, the viability of continuing with those?
Those are some things that we are definitely looking into.
Yeah, it's all about efficiency.
Yeah, we're trying to make it.
The city should be run like a business, and it has never been.
Well, one of the biggest ones is the garbage.
Yeah.
Working on the garbage, you know.
On the garbage again.
Yeah.
Well, I am in agreement with you in raising the base rates across the board. I think that's an attempt at fairness.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, thank you. And we are gonna continue looking at the city's expenditures and try to make it more efficient. I know Councilor Potting sat down with Clerk Zaller and trying to get our apartments and, and everybody up to snuff with the city ordinances, where there's snags and we wanna do it right. We're not gonna impose anything that's illegal, but it, it, it's gonna take some time to get there. But I know they're still working on it, and we're hoping to get there and to make everything fair. And to increase the revenue that balances out, hopefully. So the taxes don't have to go up on the city's end. I, I feel your pain, I know they're high. And it, it's to hear one eight thousand and the other paying under a thousand dollars for a house that really isn't much bigger, or it's newer, to me, isn't fair either. That's, and we've had discussions about our ideas of what would be fair, but we know that was just blowing into the wind. So I do feel your pain, I know it's hard, and, and a lot of people are on a fixed income in Gilbert. And it sickens me that we even had to mention thirty-four percent, because I know that would devastate them. Where, how are they gonna come, come up with any increase in taxes? That's just disheartening. So I'm glad we were able to get it down to the zero percent, and where we, the city will do what we have to do to make it function and clean up some areas with the dumpster, that dumpster that was left out. I don't know, I'm not even sure how many years it was, but water and light board, that, that was in the red every year. And of course, tax, taxpayers paid for that. That's why we got rid of it. Not entirely, because trying to look at the big picture with blight. If we bring it back in the spring, hopefully people will use it. Gilbert residents, but what we were finding, Eglith and out of the area was using it, and they're dumping their TVs, beds, and all that. So the city, Gilbert, was paying for that. So that's one of the biggest reasons why we got rid of it. But hopefully, the couple weeks we bring it back for the Gilbert residents, that offsets that. So we are looking at ways of cutting costs. Still got a lot of work to do. Still got a lot of work to do.
I just have one further comment. I know that everybody here is not responsible for the mess that we find ourselves in, but I do appreciate what you're doing, Tom.
Thank you.
One thing I'd like to say, you know, next, next year, when you have the budget meetings, I myself would appreciate if, if people participated in it, and then you could give us ideas, you know, what your thoughts are on how we, we could reduce, you know, the budget. That would be greatly appreciated by myself, anyway, as a budget member, you know.
Yeah, if anybody has any ideas, or sees something that, hey, that, maybe they should try this, I'm open for it.
But after what you guys have done, say, we expect some communication back from you on stuff that we are proposing here, that we leave lock out of here, that's it, leave your entity back ever. And that's happened so many times, in many different city councils. You know, if you want participation, we're glad to participate, but if we don't get any response back from the city on what we're talking about, we're just turning our wheels coming here in the first place. So let's communicate a little bit better. Like, I have a personal question for the entire city of Gilbert. I expect something back from you guys on, some comment on what I presented, in whatever form you're gonna come up with. But I don't wanna just walk out of the meeting and never hear again, until next year, when it's under ten grand, I.
Yeah.
Well, Denny, I will personally look into it for you, and I will contact you what I found out, if that helps.
But any communication, I appreciate, because I'm lost, I, I have nowhere to turn but the city.
Right.
I'm in the city.
I, I will go to the county, and I will ask them. I know the city really can't do anything, as far as I, my knowledge of it, but I will ask the county and, and see what I could do for you, and I will follow through on it.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, and I agree with you, communication's key. And if the city's dropped the ball, I apologize for that.
Well, I think it's happened to other people, too.
Absolutely.
What I'm saying is I'm frustrated with it.
Yep, and, and I don't blame you. I don't blame you. And, and my excuse, if you ever talk to me, and you don't hear from me, remind me, please. 'Cause I will forget.
So do you have any idea what he's talking about? About his property, do you know anything about it?
I know where it is.
But why he wouldn't be able to get a fire number?
I don't know, that'd be a Thai question. Um, Thai does all the fire numbers, but I, I mean, I don't see why not. I'm confused, we, we can get one, there's, maybe there needs to be a road access?
There's no road access within probably a mile from where his property is at. He runs, you kinda get stuck by the OHV park on the Virginia site. So they don't usually issue, uh, they'll issue a parcel number with GPS locations if there's no road access, such as for fires and stuff like that, so, but there is no road. I don't know, what would be the closest road? Highway fifty-three, or the dump road?
The landfill itself. We, we paid accounting and a fee to use the landfill gate to get to our property, and we were there before they even made the landfill.
Okay.
So that's another cost, we're paying on top of that. There's no, no access from the city of Gilbert, unless it's some illegal trail. But right now, with the expansion of the OHV park, we're right in the middle of the Virginia site of the OHV park. So as far as property values, how they compare to that something like cell, that'll never be sold, out of the state, is. So, you know, we stand alone pretty much. So how do you bathe in that? How do they come up with it? Ridiculous, no.
That's a good question. I can picture now where you're at, yeah, that's tough, 'cause you'd have to deal with the state, right? To even, 'cause they're the ones that own the property there to...
Well, yeah, well, I'm retired from there, I know all the love of communication.
Yeah, yeah, but...
But they still own the property.
Yeah.
But they own everything around you.
Yeah, so you'd need the easement to get across to get to your property.
But the county sets the market value.
Right.
The county sets them, and that's the issue here, is the market value. That value shouldn't be that high.
So they set the market value, because they're surrounded by the state?
If you're the market value, how, how you put a value on it, dude?
Exactly right.
Marketing the stuff around you.
Exactly right.
My guess is they're marketing around, because the state owns the rest of the property.
And it's location owned.
But I, I will go to the county, and I will ask them those questions, Denny.
That doesn't make any sense.
And give you an answer.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's crazy.
There shouldn't even be a value. Can't get to it, so why is there even a value?
If you ask me, that should decrease the value of it, because...
You think it would?
You guys have anything you wanna add?
I'm Shawna, down in Yarso, and I see the antenna on the water tower, and I'm wondering about that revenue. And do we need to charge more? How much are they getting, and I don't know who has antenna up there? Because, I mean, everything's going up, so are we, are we charging more for rental of that water tower for their antenna?
I'll let you answer that, Jill.
We are in a contract with them, and we get about a thousand dollars a month for those, but we're locked in a contract, so until we renegotiate the contract, we can certainly try for more. I can't say how that will go until we're in those negotiations.
It's AT&amp;T.
But we do charge them.
AT&amp;T.
Just one is up there?
That's all that's up there, correct?
What about Access Broadband?
They're not up there no more.
They're not there anymore?
Well, they're not.
Okay, they were at one time, I know, yeah.
What were they paying?
I don't recall.
I think it was like two hundred dollars at that time, if I recall.
A year?
This happened in my first term, so I'm just going by memory.
No, it was monthly.
Monthly, yeah.
Did we get a thousand for AT&amp;T? And how, when does that contract work?
Um, it's coming up in, I believe, twenty twenty-five.
And about when do you think they had a hike, and what they had to pay?
Honestly, it went down. We used to get twelve hundred, and it was negotiated down, so...
Are there other examples of where we've kind of screwed ourselves and given away money? To figure out the process?
Yeah, well, that's a touchy issue with that one, too.
We do have contracts.
I really don't wanna go there right now, but if you wanna talk to me about it later, I will tell you about it. You know, I, and...
Well, here, we're citizens, and we're blaming...
I know, and I don't wanna blame anybody, but, but it wasn't the council that negotiated that contract, put it that way. It was our legal firm that negotiated. Heck, I'm trying to be, you know, they, they, they negotiated it down, which, to me, was ridiculous, but, okay, I said it.
We have other contracts with other cities that, um, should've been negotiated at higher rates and failed to be negotiated over the years, which we're trying to correct, and it's a process, and it takes some time. We charge McKinley, and they, we have a twenty-five-year contract with them, so some of them are just really lengthy contracts without a lot of them poles, unfortunately.
There's been some mistakes made over the years, and we're trying to catch them and fix them, you know.
What else are we, you know, like, some, other than taxes, what are revenue sources? The campground, and the individual homeowners? The businesses are paying less than, um, Mr. Yudovic? Why is that? When we can't even walk up and down Main Street without smelling the cigarette smoke, seeing the drunk people, and they're getting, they pay less? Unfortunately, why is that?
Because their market values are so low.
And we don't have any control over that.
So somebody has a whirlpool hot tub now, and he's paying more?
Yeah.
And that's what, right from the assessor?
Well, yeah. The, the, the tax laws are so screwed up, like I says, I spent hours talking to these people, and I just got more and more frustrated. There's, there's, the legislature dictates everything. The assessors have to go by the legislators, however they determine the laws. They're stuck in a hard place, too. But the market values are totally determined by the sales of that type of house in the marketplace, what, what they're selling for in other places. And that's how they determine the market value. It's just not, to me, it's not fair, it's not right, but that's the way the laws are set by the state legislature.
So that's the value, but, you know, when you have a, a, a home that's got good tax-paying citizens living in it, and they're not calling the police because of all these problems, I don't know how much of our ambulances and police departments go to these bars, for instance, but we're all paying for that, too.
Well, they, they do pay for liquor licenses, and that's supposed to cover part of the police protection and everything, or extra police force that has to go to the bars. That's what the explanation I've heard of liquor licenses.
And we determine the liquor tax amount, is that a percentage?
Jill, that's...
That's set by state, but we do collect eleven thousand dollars in liquor license fees throughout the year. I mean, it's not, you know, a lot, a lot, but we do collect from them, they pay taxes, they bring people in, you know.
That's all.
That's just for the liquor licenses, correct? But that's, you know, we run them through the state, so...
Yeah.
Is it a business or together?
That's, yeah, that's what we collected as, as a whole throughout the year, is eleven thousand.
And then businesses, like, they, they also pay property tax, plus they pay fiscal disparity tax also. So, you know. But if their market values are low, all those taxes are low. And they're, to me, I think their market values should be up there, but now, again, they're going by the sales in the area, and if the bars are just selling for, you know, low prices, that's what they're gonna base their market values on. It's just, okay, it is.
We still do get mining tax, um, taxes, but not as much as like Mountain Iron, who has a mine right in their backyard, but we do still get some.
Hi, Terry McCabe again. Um, Bob, you and I have had this conversation, but I don't recall all of the detail around why we're not eligible for something like taconite tax relief? And I know you said you had looked into it at one point, but I'm wondering if...
I, I did look into that, you know, and people thought, because the mine is so close to Gilbert, and my explanation, I talked to the CIPOLA, I believe, is in charge of the, you know, getting taxes from the mining companies for the cities, and he told me, because their, where their plant is sitting, it's not in the city limits of Gilbert, the plant, just the mine is, and he says, because of what they're mining close to in our, in our area, that we only get like ten thousand dollars extra, because it's not the plant sitting in our, in our area, you know? And that's where the big monies come in, if your plant is in your, you know, in the city limits. But not the mining. That's the explanation he gave me.
And we do contract, obviously, you know this, from Boavick, uh, for police services. We did meet with them, and we're asking for an increase, so we're in that process of getting them caught up, so they'll help pay for the police services. So those are our sources of revenue and what helps us pay. I can't think of anything else that...
Well, we're working on the garbage, and when that's, that seems to be...
Yep, we're working on the garbage to get that cleaned up.
Yeah. Trying to get all the fees, so we can at least get into the black, so we don't... Trying to get all the fees so we can at least get into the black, so we don't have to take out of the general fund to make things work. And that's a big part of it. We can get the fees up to where they should be, so then we don't have to rob from Peter to pay Paul in order to, you know.
And the state, I'll just throw this out there, is changing their requirements for getting any funding. So I know there's several roads in Gilbert that could use some repair. However, they're changing it so these little two-hundred, three, five-hundred-dollar projects, they don't want to fund anymore. So unless we come up with a multimillion or a million-dollar project, we won't be able to match that. So repairs or jobs like that, we're just not going to be able to do for a while until we can get a big project together. So right now, I think with our debt services, we're. I think we've got enough debt. We need to work on how we can clean up the expenses. I mean, the main street's a beautiful job. I, it's very nice. Still confused about the bike path, but. But it, awesome street. I, I know, it's just overwhelming.
It is nice though, when you get out of your truck, that you're not right in traffic, I do have to say.
Yeah, there's some nice things, but yeah, I, I just think I got to chuckle out of it.
John, correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't that a requirement for some of the funding that there had to be a bike lane now?
It was to keep the width.
That's what I've heard.
It was to keep the width of the main street. That's what it was.
So it was a requirement that we had?
To keep the width, you had to have a bike lane. Otherwise, you would have had to narrow that main street and there wouldn't have been state funding for it.
And just to let everybody know too.
Follow the rules.
We are working on ways where we can get some of the land that we have available out to developers and, and trying to, you know, think outside of the box of how we can bring people here, housing, different things. We are actively working on that with our engineer and all of us with the council. So we are looking at strategies of how we can bring people here.
Now, was talked about business screening to town, did we, did that pan out, or?
I think that's still in the mix. The city's out of the loop now, basically, because it's a private land sale. But, um, there is a portion of city property that they were asking that we have our city attorney looking into. And I think, John, with some infrastructure that was under it, before we make any deals with them, so.
And Dr. Kobe is expanding her.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. So I, I would love to have another gas station or, or convenience store or something. With diesel, we need diesel in town. Yeah, that's, I think that's hurting the city a lot, because everybody that goes to the campgrounds hauling, they're toy haulers, they're driving diesels. If we had a diesel gas station, they'd make a mint. Because the campground's pretty much full all summer long. Yep, both of them, actually, and if we had a convenient gas station with all the amenities, it, it would be huge. And that's what we're trying to reach out and sell to some local gas stations, but it's just a cost, I'm sure.
It's a work in progress.
Yep.
So there's no way we as a city can own a diesel pump? No, I'm being really serious.
I think you could do a grocery store and a municipal liquor store, but I think that's really no bit from what I've been through. There's not a whole lot you could do.
Or a municipal marijuana plant. Now, we could do that, too.
You can even have a municipal liquor store, too.
Yep.
But trying to staff everything, you know, it's tough.
Yeah, staffing and the, I think it would cost lots of money. I don't think we're in a position to invest at this time. But yes, I, good ideas. The unfortunate thing, Gilbert's location is we're in the middle of nowhere. You got Highway fifty-three and you got the east end of town, so everybody's just driving through Gilbert. You know, it, it's, for business-wise, not a good location.
But we need residents.
We need residents.
You actually make more money off residents than you do from businesses. A lot of people think it's the opposite, but it isn't.
That's why.
Unless you get a big box store, because it goes by the building. It goes by the building, not by how much money the business is making. A lot of people assume that it's, you know, that way, but it's all on the building and that's where you get your taxes from, not from how much that business is actually generating in profit or money.
And some of the housing that I've had discussions with and the states wanting to push is, the mod medium income housing, working force housing. And what I would like to see, and I've had some of the elderly people that I've spoke with mention, they'd like to have a senior living because they want to get out of their house. So I think that would be huge in Gilbert. And with the properties, with the school and some of the other property locations right behind Broadview, I think would be prime realty. And we've had the city attorney look into the property there. A snag we run into, though, is what's buried under it. And if it go to develop it, was it Dollar General backed out because they found the structure underneath the ground and it'd cost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to remove it? We don't know what's buried up on that property. And we'd have to get that cleaned up. Right now, the city wouldn't have the funding to be able to do it. Yes, we can apply with I triple R B and been told that there's monies available for that, but again, city cost. Yep, and we would have to match it, so. Though, that's the snag in our, our progress with stuff like that, is how can we financially do it?
What is any plans for that house that's above the park? It's a beautiful house and it's been sitting since I've known him, eighty-four or whatever. It's been empty and I don't understand why they, they don't want to do something with it? Sell it, it's a property tax in that, it's a beautiful spot and you should be able to make some decent money selling that.
I'm, I've never looked into it, or I don't know if anybody really has, but that's.
That's in a park zone. It's in a park zone. You can't, you can't sell that.
Well, you changed park zone, you can make a park, you can get rid of it.
Well, you, maybe you could, but there's really never been an interest that somebody buying that house that I've ever heard, you know. I've lived here my whole life and I know that at one point, somebody wanted to make a residence up that way and they were told it's a park zone, so they just dropped it, but, you know, if there was enough interest to, yeah, change it, maybe you could, but.
What to do with it, don't be, they all, all I've ever heard of, they don't want to do anything with it. Let's, can we get rid of that as being a park zone? Because how many people use that as a park up there? Nobody does.
A lot of people go walking up there, walking their dogs, and when I was working, there is a lot of activity up there late at night, but yeah. You're right.
I mean, it's very expensive to.
Right.
They've looked at reconditioning it or bringing it back to life and it's super expensive for that old rock building, you know.
But the longer it sits empty, the more it's going to fall apart.
Exactly right, but, but there's just no monies to do anything about it. The city can't, you know, some private firm came in and helped out, maybe, but the city just doesn't have the money to do anything with it.
I mean, you got to make it step one to get into step two. And if you, if you're going to keep it as a park, then we got to do something with it. Otherwise, not have it a park and make it something that you can sell and make a couple bucks on.
Well, that, good, good suggestion, you know, and if people were very interested in that, you know, we'd look into it and possibly sell it if it made sense, you know.
Yep, but somebody's got to know that it's available and what I was told twenty years ago, it's not available.
Yeah, you're right, because somebody wanted to build the residence up there.
And they were told no, so let's not make it a park and then you can put it on the market.
Yeah. But, you know, there's going to be other properties that are going to come up, you know, with this school closing here. Those properties will be up for sale, you know, short, hopefully, maybe this summer already. You know, but I, I know where you're going with that, you know, and it's, but and if somebody really showed an interest and they were going to guarantee, they were going to put residence up there, then maybe we could, you know, look into it further. But until that happens, we don't have the money to do anything with it, you know.
And that's one of our projects we're going to work on, is going through the city Gilbert properties and coming up with a list on how we can get that advertised. Our realtor retired this year, so we don't have anybody yet. So we are going to try and sit down and have a meeting and, and come up with what properties we have and, and what we can put marketable.
How close to Lake Irving does the city own it?
I think it's sporadic around the pit. We own property all the way around it, if I'm right, Sam?
Okay, so how come they aren't building a road or doing something to put a house that actually has a lake view?
That's a very good question.
That last row of the, where you live, it's not even close to the, to having a view. You can walk down there, but there's plenty of land that you could build, because lake property goes for a lot. Even if you can't get to the lake from the property, people buy views.
Yep.
It, it would, you know, it's, it's again, you know, if there's a demand for it, you know.
Well, people have to know about it to have a demand.
Well, right, and that's what we're looking into here.
And that's why we want to slot.
Out there and see if there's interest.
What is going to be marketable. Absolutely. It would go, I, I would hope.
Down the cities that are paying two hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred thousand dollars for a lot with a house on it, they tear the house down and build a house. So they're looking for land and you look around White Lake, there's big houses going up around there.
Yep, I agree, and that's why we want to sit down and come up with what properties we have, the sizes, and plot them and get them, get them out there. I think we're one of the few cities left that actually has property. Like Virginia's almost landlocked, Avlith is landlocked, so we do have some real estate that can be valuable.
And, you know, when we have these meetings for those sales, the public's always invited. They're posted, you know, so you can get in on, you know, suggest, suggestions and it would be appreciated by the council. Everybody's ideas, you know, would be greatly appreciated, you know. And it, and as far as getting online, and I don't know where else we can post it. I guess on the board it can be posted, so then we get participation by the public.
Does Gilbert have a Facebook page for the state? Yeah, I'm sorry, I just.
Just got it up, I believe.
It would be nice to have things posted online, like even the agenda for tonight. I was on there at eight o'clock this morning and there was no agenda posted. I have to come down here and actually look.
Isn't it normally on, on the website? Oh, okay, yeah.
We try, we try to keep up.
Has Gilbert ever thought about working over the border? Have you built these houses, especially for fifty bucks?
Yes, we have.
You go to Virginia, actually, Virginia, the mountain, behind that one out, there's a bleeding mess today in this car. You go down, which is beautiful, it's pretty much like Gilbert. You look at those houses up there, there's bleeding mess everywhere in those places. And when one of those houses comes up for sale, they're sold. People are getting out of those, out of the lakes and joining to those houses.
Yep.
I think we need. I think we need a realtor to get in and get it out there to the public that these, it's available, you know.
Need to sit down and figure out what is viable and sellable.
Right.
Because we had a developer for out of the bluffs, but, you know, we got to figure out what is viable of the bluffs, what's, you know, available, and then get them out to the developers, and that's what we're working on.
Yep. And Clerk Zoller was even mentioning trying to work with the developer that's working over east, on the east side in Boavick, Coi Lakes, whatever, if we can get a mutual, make it pique their interest to come up here and maybe build something over there and build something for us. And that's one of the biggest state issues with a lot of meetings I've gone to is the developers, they, they aren't out there. That's what a lot of cities have been running into. They're not interested unless it's that huge multimillion-dollar project. So that's one of the hurdles we look into. That's why if we match our heads with other cities and try to do a multi-project for them and hopefully we can get somebody to bite and look into that. So, but it is a big state push for housing across the state, so. It would be nice to bring lots of people back to Gilbert.
So I was going to ask also about, when I go home and look at my statement or just I grabbed a different piece of property, but what's the math that you want to get home? Now, the levy's zero and it's not three, four, you know, is there an easy way to count those numbers on my statement? Depending, you know, the imposed.
What is it, three and a half percent?
I'd say three and a half percent is what I gathered from mine, because we set it at thirty-four and our, it was thirty-seven and a half, so I'd say three and a half percent is what.
But if the property's value went up?
Yes.
Well, that negates it then, you know.
Yep.
I wonder if that could be on the Gilbert Facebook page, but not everybody has Facebook page, but some little formula.
I don't know what the county, what the state and county formulas are, you have to reach out to them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're smoking out our statement for Gilbert portion.
You know, if your, if your market value stayed the same from last year and because our net tax capacity went up, because all the market values went up, actually, your Gilbert tax could go down a little bit. That's another thing with taxes. You know, it gets to be very complicated. And even the auditors, I've questioned them for hours, too, and they're not even quite sure how these formulas work.
They have no clue.
Yeah, so it's, it's a magic formula as far as I'm concerned. That's what I got out of it, you know.
Yep. Is there anybody else with any last comment or concern you wish to address with the city? Otherwise, we'll wrap, yep.
Does it have to be tax-related or maybe anything?
Anything.
Yeah. Anything else tax-related? All right, I thank you all for coming in and I thank you for your concerns. If at any point you have any in the future, please reach out to us. Catch, I'm in and out a lot. If you have any, I can look into it. I know Councillor Pottingen's available.
And my number is seven four nine three three two one. Call me anytime. I got a landline, got an answering service on it, and I'll call you right back. Any question you have, I'm glad to answer it.
Councillor Polis works all the time, so he's usually not available.
I'm available.
No, yes, he is, but. Yes, he is, but please, any questions, anytime, reach out. We'll, we'll do our best to get you the answer. And I agree with the communication. We will work our hardest to correct that issue and get information out to the people that, what's going on with the city.
I think that Facebook page, if we can get that out to people that do have it, because even old people and young people online use that.
Yep.
And then you're not making paper.
Yep. I agree. I agree. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn our special meeting? Moved by Councillor Polis.
Second.
Supported by Councillor Potenon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries. Meeting adjourned at a seven eleven P M. And thanks again for coming in. We will take five minutes and then we'll move into our situated. All right, we'll get started with our regular council meeting for tonight. Welcome everyone to the City of Gilbert City Council Meeting, Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, at seven nineteen P M. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor. Councillor Potenon.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councillor Polis.
Here.
Councillor Heitzman and Skensich are absent with notice. I also have City Attorney, Chief of Police, City Engineer, Operations Director and Clerk.
We do have a quorum. Would everybody please stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we have two additions to approve for, under the consent agenda for, uh, the pay and estimate change order manhole replacement project, twenty-two dash one three three, and the core main and gray mount invoice. And number two, under the new business. Should we do these one at a time?
Yeah, I'd like some information on this, uh,
Well, we're just.
Pay estimate change order.
Let's add it and then we can discuss it.
What's that? We're just gonna add it first, okay.
I'll move to add these to the agenda.
Yep.
Moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Potenon. Add the additions under the consent agenda, the pay estimate change order for the manhole replacement. And under new business, uh, the fire department quote, first responder quote, and the hatch annual service partnership renewal. So under new business D. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries. Uh, consent agenda for the city council minutes. Boards commission minutes, invoice from previously approved projects, invoices for campground, reimbursed general fund for October, November, payments of bills and payroll upon proper audit of Clerk and Mayor.
I'll move.
Moved by Councillor Polis. Or any further discussion? Councillor Potenon, you wanted to discuss?
Ask about the, uh, pay estimate change order manhole replacement.
Yeah, but isn't that down by D?
Nope, that's under new business.
This is in the consent agenda.
Consent agenda was added to the consent agenda.
If I may, the final estimate is for the remaining two, Joel and Sop doing business as too easy for their final billing of twenty-three thousand, seven thirty-six, thirty-two. And the change order is actually a decrease for, they, they compressed the portion of the project where they didn't do as many as originally estimated, so it decreased the project by, was it twenty thousand?
Twenty-six?
Yeah.
Nine thirty-eight?
Correct.
So this is just the final payment?
Correct.
And, and this payment is coming from where?
Uh, we got funding, which was remaining from the excess from the D O T off of the infrastructure projects. And then we had, um, what was that, thirty-four thousand dollars, I think we got remaining, and then we had leftover from that project and P F A monies.
So it was covered from previous other monies?
The city still did have about a fifteen thousand.
Didn't have to put in any money.
We did put about fifteen thousand dollars into this, correct, for all of them.
Of that hundred and thirty thousand dollar project?
Correct.
Okay. Just letting the public know. We're watching things.
That fixes a lot of, a lot of slow manholes that were, that were streaming down.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So I'm good with the consent agenda then?
Okay, moved by Councillor Polis, supported by Councillor Potenon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, three zero. And we'll move on to public input. Now, please step forward. Sorry to keep you waiting for so long.
Uh, so my name is Mark Haveland. I live here in Gilbert. Uh, I'm a fitness coach, um, and starting in January, through Rock Ridge School System, I am starting what's called a Warrior Kid Club. Um, it's a fitness club for kids to join. Uh, and I'm using their, El- North Star Elementary School for that. When I was going through this, I had parents who homeschool, homeschool their children, reach out to me and have interest in joining this club as well. Um, but with the ones that homeschool, they wouldn't be able to make it to the North Star Elementary School to take part in that. So I'm looking for a space that I could use, uh, for these families that homeschool their children. And I was pulling up like the auditorium over at the public library. Uh, is there a way that I could have access to that for, say, an hour on Friday and an hour on Saturday throughout, like, January? Or potentially more further than just January, depending on how the club goes?
Just, just for that hour?
It would just only need to be, like, the class would be an hour, so I'd say give an hour and a half where I can clean up and set up before and after.
I know there's fees, I mean, you know. We have to charge everybody the same. We can't, you know, favor one party over another, and there are fees. And Jill, I don't know if you know, they don't go by the hour. I think it's by the day if you rent, you know, space up in the auditorium.
It's, it's by the day for the auditorium. Um, we have in the past for certain organizations waived the fee, um, Girl Scouts, the capacities.
Right, I know, and, and we get back into this again, you know, where we've always had, you know, where, where do we limit this or where, you know?
Reduce the fee for him, just being that he, you know.
What's the normal fee?
What's the auditorium, the whole building, I wanna say it's a hundred dollars or eighty dollars.
It's eighty dollars, I think, for auditorium, a hundred and five dollar deposit.
That's for a day?
That's for a day.
And you only need it for an hour?
Yes.
And he's also, I guess, you know, you're looking at all ages, all equal levels in that respect.
And how big a space do you need?
Well, really, I don't even, like, right now I have it to where, I mean, even a space the size of this room would be sufficient for the kids that I have interested. Uh, because on Friday, I have three kids interested, and then Saturday would be five kids that are interested.
So if we allowed you here, in here, because you're just getting it started, right? To see if they even have interest and.
Yeah, because we can shut that curtain.
So we could shut the curtain, so from where that curtain is, you're standing on the back, behind you, would that be enough space?
Yes. Um, would the, would I be able to have access on Saturdays as well?
Yep. So to get you off the ground rolling?
May I ask a question? Is this affiliated with the school district or is this a program run?
This is personal.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm Haveland Functional Fitness.
Okay.
Uh, throughout the summer, I did run a Little Legend Boot Camp through the Iron Trail Order Event Center in Virginia. However, they charge twenty bucks an hour to rent out that studio, which, I mean, well, obviously, everybody's complaining about the price of everything going up. I'm trying to keep fitness as affordable as possible to these people because I'm charging these people fifty bucks a month to sign up for this program, which ends up being about ten bucks per time that they call. And then for that little people, paying twenty dollars an hour for a space to rent is really not beneficial.
So are you generating profit from this? Let's see, oh, there's a little bit of a issue there.
Yeah, it's not just a, a community's, you know, club, a community service club.
Yeah.
What do we, what do we charge for Michael there or your company? It's very minimal, I know, we're doing a part for.
They do charge. They do charge for like birthday parties and stuff in there.
I think it, I wanna say it's forty. So if someone is interested, they just can.
I think that was a little bit of a date.
I guess the other piece I was gonna say, in addition to, you wanna be mindful of, you know, you wanna support, uh, groups and, and community activities and whatnot, and there is a public purpose here, you're working with a private entity, which is a little different than a nonprofit. The other thing is, to the extent the council's interested in doing this, I would wanna see that we did some liability waivers and things like that, if they're doing, uh, activities here on, on city property of any kind.
You would have that, right, liability waivers?
They all, uh, before they can sign, or when they sign up, they sign a liability waiver with me, and then I have my own insurance.
And we wanna get copies of your liability policy as well.
How soon are you planning on starting this?
Uh, the first Friday in January is the first class that I'm running through, uh, Rock Ridge, and I was hoping to be able to begin at that same time for the kids that are on school.
Do you know how many kids are gonna be involved then?
As of right now, I have three kids that would be here for Friday, and then on Saturday, I have five kids. It's two different families each day, um, as of now.
So if I could, if it's on, we charge something, we would be without, it's not a legal, correct?
Right, the city has to get some benefit from it.
Ten bucks.
It has to have a public purpose. And then the liability and insurance issues.
Yeah.
Friday, Saturday.
Every Friday, Saturday?
Um, for, yeah, for the month.
Just for January?
Uh, for starting off January, yes.
Would it continue into February, March?
It, it's really, uh, I'm, I'm.
Trial.
Seeing how it does, right, to see if it's worth going forward. I'm hoping there becomes enough interest to where I can keep it going. Hopefully, I wanna keep it like a, a year-round thing. My vision with this Warrior Kid Club is, like, you know how you have the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts? I want this to be like Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, but for fitness and health for children.
Right.
But it'd be a co-ed?
Boys and girls?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Twenty-five dollars for the month.
Yeah, we, we could kinda do it as a trial basis for the first month and see what your numbers are.
See how close.
You know.
So are you saying how much for?
Twenty-five for the month?
For the month.
Does that seem fair to start?
Better than twenty dollars an hour.
Right.
But you do understand that we can't, we're in that bind, we wanna work with you.
They have programs for Rock Ridge, they, they end up having a fee of like one, two dollars per kid that signs up through their, uh, community, yes, over there. I understand that you gotta pay a fee, uh, for using it, and the fact that I'm a private entity in that sense.
Yeah.
Are, are these children from Gilbert?
Uh, I know one family's from Gilbert, uh, two of them would be out of Virginia, and then the other family is kind of on the outskirts of town. Uh, for the ones.
Yeah, as long as some Gilbert residents, I could see it, you know.
I'll, I'll make a motion for twenty-five dollars for the month. As long, that, that's.
For rental of that back curtain space?
Space. One thing we have to double check though is, because I know we have a calendar that somebody might have already rented it. We have to double check and make sure that nobody's here because I know, um, a lot of, uh, yeah, what am I thinking of?
Birthday parties.
Birthday parties or, uh, right up, baby showers? I'm sorry, baby showers and stuff, they have, um, rent out. So providing that.
I'm just wondering, if we had the time, if you could come in morning versus afternoon, birthday parties, they, they have, you know, just make your morning.
So for the families that are looking at Friday, they're wanting to do it as part of their homeschool curriculum, so they're looking at before three thirty, having a dunk? Um, and Saturdays, it's around ten A M. uh, that they were looking at?
So is there an issue if we put the partition in, do they both sides? Is there an issue with that?
That's what I was wondering.
Well, you have.
You have all our technology here.
Or doesn't?
It hasn't been up in years. You know, the last time it was up, it was before.
The curtain?
Yeah.
Well, I guess you don't have to be curtained off as long as nobody else in here.
Ain't gonna move.
I thought we just had a question about a wedding shower, not one of the other?
Yeah.
We could just check the calendar and find out. That's my motion.
But then, but then as far as, you know, moving the furniture and stuff, you're gonna clean up and pay back to waivers.
Proper documentation, yeah.
The cleanup and moving wherever I need and whatever space I would need for that.
I guess, do we need a contract written out for all this?
And we could prepare a, a simple contract and a waiver, and then we just need to get a copy of your liability policy. So if you want to direct City Attorney to do that, we could get that done very quickly.
Yeah, my motion includes all that.
Yeah.
I would have a sample, simple one, too.
Right, yeah, we could revise that.
Including cleanup. Yeah, okay. Yeah, did you make the motion?
I did.
So motion.
I'll second it, yeah.
Right. I'll try and get it right here. So Councillor Polis, motion to have a set fee of twenty-five dollars for the month and pending the, receiving the paperwork from you for the insurances and whatnot, uh, brought to the city, and we'll direct our City Attorney to draft a contract to work it out with you.
Did you wanna limit it to just one month for starters, or did you wanna revisit it, or how did you wanna?
Um, yeah, how would we word that? Because if it's, it's good, then I don't see a purpose to revisit it other than another fee or twenty-five per month.
Can we revisit it in six months, see how it's going?
Yeah, revisit it, yeah.
Yeah.
Is this through the summer also?
Uh, I, I, I want it to become, uh, an all-year-round thing if I can.
But then we might wanna assess.
Revisit, like, possibly using the auditorium.
If you have more kids.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
This is a trial period here, so.
So, so we'll, we'll set a time for six months to revisit it or until you bring it to us, asking.
Maybe sooner.
Sooner?
You know, when, when I just, even.
Three months?
Three months.
Three months?
If there's something that we don't like, we can correct it or whatever.
Okay.
But the contract will read that we could correct anything midterm of the contract, you know, time period anyway, I would think. I would think, so, yeah, okay.
Does that cover it?
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None motion carries, three to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck with that, and I hope it goes well. Is there any other public input?
I am Sean of Denji, or so, and, you know, I also, someone mentioned that you guys announced your zero levy and there was dead silence. You know, and I think our council and all the people who work on the budget need some kind of public recognition for getting our levy down to zero. So thank you on behalf of my husband and I, and I'm sure there's many people in this town who are so grateful, just like a Christmas gift to the residents, so thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll move on to the reports from Mayor and. Uh, we'll move on to the reports from mayor and council. I stopped down at the gazebo when they were decorating it and saw it that night, and I want to thank Lois and Sandy and everybody that partook in decorating it. It, it looks really nice, really nice, and spruce is up that area quite a bit. So I'll thank you for setting those lights up. Um, that's all I can think of, councillor Pottingen.
Uh, I don't have anything tonight, you know.
Thank you, councillor Polis.
Same thing, touch on the gazebo, and it looks awesome, uh, well decorated. One night I went by, it was like dark, and the next day it was lit up like crazy, so it was really cool to see. Also, it's cool to see all these people that are maybe participating in the contest for the decorations. I've seen a lot of houses that are going way out and beyond, uh, Ty, Ty's a little behind, but he'll catch up. Other than that.
I have some lights for you, Ty.
Merry Christmas to all, because we won't have a meeting probably till after that, so.
Yes, that is a good point. I would like to wish everybody Merry Christmas, two and a half, safe holidays. Um, and touching on the Christmas light, uh, I want to thank Tanya for, Tanya Smith, for doing the work she's done to, to bring that back to life, and Clerk Zoller and the city staff. Uh, hopefully, it's a big success. I know we reached out to almost every city or every city business in town. Got covered and some residents, so hopefully it's a good turnout.
I guess I do have something to say then, after hearing all that. Yes, and I, I also thank everybody that's been involved with this. I mean, we've been asking for participation from volunteers for years, and I felt that was a dying, something that died in Gilbert. And now that I see this coming back, it's so appreciated by, I think, everybody in town. So thanks all the volunteers that helped make this, uh, happen. Thank you.
I have drafted letters and loan costs and a lot of businesses that I have not heard back from, declarations. We wrote one out yesterday. Um, we have six businesses so far that have given donations, and we have nine homes registered that I'm aware of right now, so. We, we do have participation, the businesses are actually quite excited about having a late competition here in town, so. I want to be clear that Tanya is pretty much run this by herself, because we have not had Tanya work in here. In addition to letters, I did go door to door to businesses, asking as well, so I put in some time.
And it's well appreciated, because it brings back the spirit that I like to see. All right, moving on, thanks again, everybody. Reports from staff boards and commissions, uh, fire chief, assistant chief. What are you now?
Good evening, mayor and council, um, Chief Kawai is gone again.
Chief Kawai is gone again tonight, so, um, I'm here in place of him. So, first of all, um, I have tonight, uh, request approval from the city council for the Gilbert Fire Department officers for twenty-twenty-four. I believe you should have the paper in front of you for that. Um, Chief Mark Karowski, uh, deputy chief Anthony Demnick, battalion chief Todd Devich, Captain Mike Burdach, Captain Jamie Lotiger, Lieutenant Rusty Rask, our trustees, uh, Derek Boebi, Brandon Cuff, and Isaac Goboy. So that will be our officer list and trustees for twenty-twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by councillor Polis.
One second.
Supported by councillor Pottingen to accept the fire department's election of officers. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries three to zero.
Thank you very much. Um, the next thing I have is a request for approval to purchase, um, some items. I gave you all a list of, uh, some items that people like to purchase. Um, there's a few of things, some fittings for ladder twenty-three, um, a new two-and-a-half-inch gate valve, which, um, unfortunately got wrecked at the last fire from Evlith. Um, we had a little mishap, and somebody drove away with the hose still connected, and thankfully, it was only the valve that got wrecked. Um, so that's the replacement valve for that, and then a new hydrant bag. Um, so that's the first page that you're seeing there. And the second page, um, is for some new, uh, ladder belts, some new safety belts, um, for going up onto the ladder itself. And then the air required that we are, um, attached to the ladder when we get up top. Um, we have currently one belt, and it is mostly one size fits most. And we found over in Evlith that it just, we needed some more sizes, so on that second page, you'll see two belts, large X to large, and then two belts, um, double XL. And then on the third page is, um, some batteries that we need for our radios. We've been running into some major issues with, uh, our members going interior and their batteries dying in the middle of a fire, and we cannot communicate with them. So we are asking for fifteen new batteries for our, uh, department radios, um, that you have there. And this is all in the budget.
So the fifteen batteries is one hundred and thirty-six dollars apiece, correct?
Yes.
Oh, I looked at that and saw one thousand eight hundred dollars apiece.
Oh, no.
So that, that's total for fifteen batteries, gotcha.
The total you see there, um, the eighteen thirty-six is for fifteen batteries, and they, they discounted us two hundred and four dollars for ordering that many, and all two hundred and four dollars isn't much, but it's better than.
That's better than nothing, yes.
I'll make that motion to approve the request.
Awesome. Motion by councillor Polis.
One second.
Supported by councillor Pottingen to accept the request for these items you've mentioned. Any further discussion?
Just tell everyone on the fire department, thanks for all they do, man, appreciate it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries three to zero.
All right, and then the last thing I have, um, just to let the council know and everybody know, um, the MDFCE came out with an award for this year for our training. Um, this year, we're awarded four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars, which is two hundred and nineteen dollars per firefighter. Um, so that's a good, good amount of money, and that, um, a lot keeps on going up every single year, because I keep on sending above and beyond for our training, so.
Good.
Our training for this next year is gonna, um, be really good for our firefighters, so.
Excellent, excellent. A little touch on councillor Polis's comments, I do appreciate the work you guys have done this year, it's been, seems freakish with the fires that we've been having in the surrounding areas, so tell everybody that the council's proud of them, and thanks, thank you for what you do.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your support.
And my understanding is you're having retirees, so hopefully you're advertising for more people, yeah.
I'm, I'm working on that on our Facebook page and, um, talking to a lot of people. Um, I'd like to try to get something for our newer guys and everybody that, you know, brings somebody in and, you know, a little bit of a benefit for, you know, our community and our members to try to, because right now, we can actually, five people can retire in the next six months if we really, if I look at it correctly, so. I really got to start working on getting some new members, so if anybody wants to join the fire department, we are, uh, we are looking.
Is, is that also on our page, then, on our city page? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we have the big banner in the window and everything, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's all I got for you, thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. City attorney.
Good evening, mayor, council, I don't have a formal report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Chief teacher.
Good evening, mayor, council. Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, the one I have this evening is, uh, we approached the Rock Ridge School District to make a request for, uh, fitness equipment that they had at the old high school in Evlith, and they have granted that we've, uh, get first pick at anything that we would like. So next council, I'll plan to make a request of the donation from the Rock Ridge School District for, for the, uh, uh, for the equipment. So I'm hoping that the approval that we had through the public safety funding for that equipment, we're hoping that that'll be a, we can cut that price in half. We, the council at the last meeting had approved ten thousand dollars with the public safety funding. However, I think we'll be able to utilize that money in different areas, so, um, once we get everything figured out, we're hoping to cut that cost in half, so. Um, so, yeah. Uh, while you were talking, this will be my, uh, twenty-second, uh, taxation meeting on setting the levy, and, uh, while I was sitting here, I was doing the funding, people were asking what it was gonna cost. So basically, our tax rate is a one point two-nine, so if you take the value of your house after the reduction of your homestead credit, and you multiply it by one percent, and multiply it by one, our tax rate is one point two-nine, I believe, that'll be what your city portion of tax will be. So if people are wondering what the thirty percent is, by taking a zero percent, just multiply your house value less, see, less the.
The tax will market.
The tax will market value from whatever you get for the tax credit, multiply that by one percent, by one point two-nine, that'll, that will be able to tell you right now what your tax rate will be, so. Or what your tax will be for.
It's an average tax rate, it's not exactly.
For the Gilbert city, yeah.
But it's an average, because some people's tax rates vary in town.
So I just did some math just now, I see what the twenty-twenty-three tax rate was, so I'm going off that, sorry, I was bored.
So we can just.
But then again, that tax rate can change because of our net tax capacity.
Net tax capacity, yeah, you divide that by your.
Yeah, right, but that's, that's.
You just confused me. So, we can direct everybody to you, correct?
Guarantee, I'm within, I'm within five percent, I guarantee us. And that's all I have, mayor.
Thank you.
I do want to say, Ty, those, those signs are slowing people down in town.
It seems like it's.
I've seen it.
Momentarily, they see that slowing down, once they get by it. No, they're, they're doing good, I've seen a lot of people breaking. Uh, city engineer, John.
Anything this evening, so just adjourned items, thank you.
Thank you. Public works.
Um, just a couple things, um, one was the, to hire Keith Brown as, uh, rink attendant down at the, the, uh, for the rink, for the second. Um, I know I haven't started, started down there yet, but, uh, it'd be nice to get, uh, a number-two guy on, and so if, if we ever do get a chance to start flooding and doing work down there, we'd have two people hired, so.
So what is the hiring process for the, the?
What I've always.
Part-time help like that?
What I've always done is I just kind of, we, well, this kind, it was kind of a rare year that we had two applicants, um, actually, three total, um, applicants. Um, it's kind of, I had, uh, when I first was in this position, I had another one that I would just meet with them and do just kind of a little interview with them, and if they're, uh, both, you know, capable of doing it, I'd just pick one, you know? The best one I'd feel that would do the job, so that's where I figured Keith would be the best for the job, and so that's where I'm suggesting to council to hire him.
Do you do background checks?
We do, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how much of a background check they are, but we, you know, I always give them to Ty, and we, we do a background check on, on everybody.
Okay. Because I'd like to see some consistency with our hiring process through across the board, and I, that's why I wasn't familiar with it, but.
Yeah, I, you know, summer help, I've always done it, but same thing with summer help, um, like rink attendants, we haven't had much to choose through, through the years. Um, I know, like, years past, um, for summer help is, you know, council wanted, uh, years ago, council wanted me to hire, um, more college kids. Well, you know, college kids stop, stop, uh, applying, so now it's just kind of whoever we can, we can get, you know?
Right.
Kind of been a tough road, usually we're trying to solicit somebody to come in and for summer help, so. Same thing with rink attendants, it's the same type of thing, so.
Yeah, I, I get it, it's slim pickings, people just.
Well, there's other jobs and, you know, you know, the younger ages are busier doing other stuff for sports and whatnot, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we advertise, I think, uh, two or three weeks in the paper, so, you know, up here on the board and whatnot, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys want to change it, feel free.
Well.
I mean, we, if there's a better process that you want me to change or do, I'm open to suggestions.
Yeah, well, I know Clerk Zoller had some ideas, and we should try to keep it fair and simple across the board, so. Not that that system wasn't, it just, so everybody's on the same page with the hiring process. The, it's done now, right? Those are the two, or is it still open?
We hired Jerry Mackey, which he's been here for years.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to get somebody here that knows what they're doing, um, and, you know, Keith would be the second, you know, if you guys, if you guys approve him. But if you want to do something else, where we want to hire, do a committee for summer help too, I don't, whatever.
We'll have to discuss that, because I think, you know, we should have a procedure and follow it all the time. You know, a, a one-man hiring, to me, may not be fair, you know, because you need other people's perspective. I, I believe that's just how I look at it, you know?
Okay, did, when do you plan on icing?
On weather.
After we have the forty-degree weather this week?
Well, I mean, it's, I mean, it's not looking good, it's pretty slim throughout the next week, week and a half, so.
So we can discuss it and come up with a plan yet?
Maybe for this time, though, but I mean in the future.
Or in the future.
I mean, yeah.
All right.
Right. So, you want a motion to, to hire Keith Brown for this time?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Chief?
Can I just mention, when the, when I do the background checks, uh, one issue that I found with Gilbert is, we need to probably look at, if we're gonna look at this in the future, is, uh, we have no disqualifiers when we do a criminal history check. Um, if it's, they're dealing with children, they're level-one, two or three sex offenders, registered sex offenders, then we can prevent that. However, if somebody is convicted of any type of felony, um, we do not have a disqual, the police department does, obviously, we have a little more stringency within our policies for hiring, however, as far as the blanket policy goes for the city, we do not have any listed disqualifiers. Um, and what I mean by disqualifiers is if they've been convicted of a felony, we have nothing in our policy that states that if they are, if they're convicted felons, that that would prevent them from being hired. Um, we still have to accept their, accept their application, as we do no longer ask if they are a felon, because we can no longer do that. However, during the background process, specifically involving dealing with, uh, children under the age of eighteen, that, uh, causes some issues, and I think that we need to put in the policy what the disqualifiers are. Uh, disqualifiers could be, even if it's, if they're operating machinery, if they've had a DUI within the past five years, that can be disqualifier. We've obviously tightened that up a little, we don't, that disqualifies, you know, one point two million Minnesotans, so we don't necessarily have to do that. But what I'm saying, when it comes to theft, um, or, or assault of behavior, something like that, we can put that in, that if they were involved in assault or any type of theft within the last ten years, that would be a disqualifier. So I, I haven't really had too many back, and I can't, I don't want to speak too much to any certain situation, um, but we have had one situation where there were some felonies from twenty years ago. But because it was twenty years ago, and we had nothing within the policy to, uh, prevent them from being hired, being a disqualifier, it kind of ties my hands. I, I do the background and kind of go, well, he's not wanted for murder, and they're not level-two sex offenders, so. Other than that, I, I, I can't disclose to anybody their criminal histories, so it's, you know, I, I.
So, so when they apply, maybe we need a sheet of paper to say you're disqualified. So, so when they apply, maybe we need a sheet of paper to say you're disqualified if you have these violations?
Not during the initial, under state law. That's no longer allowed. So that's why on the, on your uh, application forms, you never see if you've been convicted of a felony. That's been taken out. However, that's just for the beginning portion. Once you move to the next portion of the hiring process, then I don't wanna, I guess for lack of a better term, it'd be their fair game. To determine whether or not
They qualify.
They are disqualified. But the initial process, we cannot. So some places, what they'll do is they'll take the applications and they'll give three applications and say, hey, can you run criminal history background checks on them? That's okay. So you can even do that before you do an interview.
Is considered as an interview that is when you trigger that you can now go back?
Sure. So, so we just need to have it put into our policy because there's, there's no policy I can go off of. I mean, you know, the days of me going wink, wink, don't hire them. We can't do that anymore. We gotta have some type of process. So.
I agree. I agree.
So. But for now, we're just gonna?
For now.
Until we get a policy in place?
Yep. And I agree with Chief. We need to have that policy.
Yeah.
And Mayor Council, you might wanna indicate what the rate of pay is and if you have a limit on hours. Again, this is gonna be under, it's part-time. It's not gonna be a union position, but you wanna delineate all that in your motions.
And another thing that has come up with unemployment, some have filed for unemployment. And I don't know if you can, you know, have that
It's, I ask.
Not allowed?
It really is allowed. It goes by strictly, it goes strictly by hours now. Unless, you know, they, there's contingencies or if they're fired or something to that effect, but otherwise it's strictly hours. If they, if they qualify for hours, they're eligible for unemployment. I specifically asked.
They can get unemployment if they got the hours in?
Correct. So if they had another job coming here, that, it's all, they're all based off hours nowadays.
But can we not allow them to get unemployment even though the hours, you know, would allow them to collect unemployment by using our hours?
You cannot any longer. No. It goes strictly by hours.
You can, you have to allow them to get unemployment.
And you have to have so many hours per quarter. So again, it depends what that is. You know, I don't know that off the top.
Right. I, I understand that part. But I'm just saying, even if they qualified, can we say we're not gonna accept people that are gonna? Yeah. That's an issue. Because then it's not fifteen dollars an hour anymore. You know, then it gets to be a heck of a lot more money if they're drawing unemployment off of you.
We can get back to you on what the actual hours are per quarter if you wanted to look at that, you know, when you're setting up the positions.
Right. But I'm saying they're gonna carry their hours from the previous quarter with them. And that's, that's where the issue comes in.
It actually goes back three months and then it's the previous twelve months for there that determines unemployment.
So now that if they go back to three months and they add their hours with Gilbert, now they can draw unemployment for six months. And part of it's coming from us to pay the unemployment, which can come to a, a large amount of money, depending on, you know, how many hours they put in previously in another job. You know?
They'll only pay for the portion of hours they claim from us, but it would be compiled in their unemployment. So we wouldn't pay any more just because they work for somebody else.
What I'm just saying about paying unemployment at all.
Sick and safe is gonna come into play too.
Completely, you know?
Fortunately, that's out of our hands when the state makes those mandates.
It's not out of your hands unless, because you know if the guy's came from another job or if he hasn't, then you know he's not gonna file unemployment because he has no hours built up. But if you know that he's coming from another job where the hours are built up, he's likely to file unemployment.
But Bob, there's no way to predetermine that for the next year and a half because he could go work study after leaving us for twelve months and unavoidably be laid off. And he would still be in that twelve months.
But if, if you ask him what his previous employment was, then you have an idea.
But that's where we can't get into that.
We can't ask previous employment on the application?
You can ask for a resume or experience things of that nature, but you can't do it for targeting unemployment.
No, I, I know. But I mean, just, you, you could find out.
Again, as, as Clerk Zoller says, you don't, you can't predict the future either. I mean, you maybe even would get information about the past, but you aren't gonna know what they're gonna do in the next twelve months. So it's a, it's a moving target. It's really difficult to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Wow, that's, it's just.
We'd be avoiding that is to not hire seasonal employees. And unfortunately, we need them, you know, especially for winter season. So sick and safe comes into play as of January first as well. So for every thirty hours, they'll get an hour of sick and safe time. That'll come into play.
That's why if you can hire youth, you're, you know, then you don't have, run into that problem.
Still qualified though. You are qualified for unemployment at eighteen and you still get sick and safe. There's no age limit on that.
Right. What I'm saying, you know, high school kids, you know? Anyway, whatever. Oh, so there's a limit on that too, as far as age? You gotta be over sixteen? Or eighteen?
It's just like driving along.
Is it over eighteen or sixteen?
Over eighteen.
Oh, okay.
Hands are tied. No matter what we look.
To a certain degree, yeah.
Right. So. So you're asking for a motion to approve Keith Brown?
I made it.
Counselor Polis made the motion to hire Keith Brown for a seasonal position with the city of Gilbert at fifteen dollars an hour. You support that?
Did you make the motion already?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll support it, yep.
Supported by Counselor Poten. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Polis say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero.
Is disulfide?
Disulfide is in. The only thing I didn't do was the pole, so we'll get that, we'll get that all set up this spring.
Any issues with that remaining part of the tree up there that fell down up by the park?
We took two or three down there.
You did? They weren't blown down there? You just took them?
Just one blew down and we took the other, one or two that had come down.
Okay.
There's a few up in the park here that we have to.
Address? Okay.
I don't know if the bug went through up there. Yeah, it's
Okay.
Did you cut the tree by the Delta Dental parking lot? When you come into town, it's probably in the right of way of the state right of way, but it looks shabby. You know, when you come in from the Evolith Way and just right next to the parking lot for Delta Dental. It's in the, yeah, it's in the right of way there.
I'll take a look.
Yeah. Yeah.
But yeah, we've been, it was quite a material.
Good. Thank you. And campground hose, she's not on? She is? Okay. There she is. Faintly.
Hello?
There you are. Hello?
Aye. Well, I don't have much to report on Smith's happening at the campground. I'm sure it's covered in snow by now.
Not really. We don't have much here.
No snow?
Nope.
Oh, why you're lucky for you guys.
What we do have is gonna melt by the end of the week.
Oh, okay. Um, I did have one thing that I wanted to talk about, and that is the pavilion. That we're supposed to get built down there. We got the parking lot, but no pavilion. And the reason I bring it up is because I had a couple campers that had come in this summer and said, what's going on with the pavilion? Um, we had a, we have a box that sits at the office that people put money into to go towards pavilion. And every fall I turn that in. And it says, we've been putting money in that box and we don't see anything ask me. And so I said I'm gonna bring it up and I just kept forgetting about it. But I figured I'd do it today.
How long has that been going on?
What's that?
How long have, have the donations been going on?
Well, for years I've been there plus. I don't know how long.
When you turn it in, do you have a dollar amount you turn in?
No, I just turn in my money, um, to, to, um, City Hall in an envelope. I don't know how much over the past three years, but, um, um, I know it's been going on for more than three years. It was, it was there when I got there.
Do you?
I have no idea. Uh, prior to my coming in here, more than likely, it was probably just put in with the campground into their, you know, with their cash box and that's all deposited into their account. But without a receipt, I have nothing to track. So it was probably just absorbed by the campground. I mean, and unfortunately, anybody that gives a donation, it should be given a receipt and it needs to be approved by council. So I think for future, all donations should, should come through City Hall so that proper receipt can be given and it documented. And then it makes it to City Hall for approval. Because I have no way to track it.
Yep. There's gotta be a paper trail to that, Wendy.
And it's hard to see. And those people that, you know, over the last three years, aren't here any longer. So I have no idea.
I, I would think you should just eliminate it. Don't take donations. It'll clear it up.
Yeah. Did you hear that, Wendy?
No, I didn't.
The
What was that?
The, the money you turned in would be absorbed into the campground fund.
Right.
So, excuse me, without us knowing of any number or what it was for, it's just gonna be listed as campground money. So we'd have no idea what was for what. So whatever nominations, it just got rolled in. So.
If the council would like to have a donation option for campers to make those donations, we can code that into the new system. I just need to know what we would want to do in there. And it could be itemized as a donation. Um, that is something we possibly can do and customers could get a receipt for it. So we just need to determine what we would like to do.
And there is a code in the campground fund for donations. I mean, each, each account has one, but.
But would we have to approve the donation every time then? Every week or every month or?
Um, I would, I would think that as far as the consumer, we can still give them a receipt. We can roll it up monthly and present a monthly amount for council to approve donations received by, and we can list, we can itemize list each person that's made those donations. We can put that into a process. Again, we just need to know how we wanna do that.
Is this a big source of money? And how many dollars are we talking about?
We, honestly, we don't know. Um, it could be fifty bucks, could be five hundred bucks. No idea.
I just eliminate it.
It'd make it a lot easier.
I'm making a motion to eliminate it.
Yeah. Yeah, don't accept any donations.
Unless it's like a big one.
And then it could come to the city with that. If it's a big one, if they wanna donate, come to city, you know, office.
I mean, anybody that wants to donate can certainly come to City Hall where we can give them the proper receipts. And I just think that should be the procedure that I don't discourage anybody from donating to the city or any events, but come get a receipt. One, it's tax deductible for yourself. And two, we need that paper trail. We need that. And then we can bring them in. You know, like we are for the lighting one here. We've got, you know, a few of them and we have a motion just to accept them. It's just a proper, proper procedures.
Yeah. So did you catch that, Wendy?
No, everybody's coming. They're holding it. You.
So the discussion is that, uh, do you have any idea of the nomination? Is it worth continuing, uh, donation process or just eliminating it? And if they wish to donate, to have them come to City Hall and talk to the clerk or whoever's in the office to get a proper receipt so we can track it.
Okay. So whichever way you wanna do it, if you want me to eliminate the box, I can do that. What they do is they take like, um, if they're chained back from paying for their site and they drop the rest in the box.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I, I, I think, cause we need to have that paper trail. We need to know what it's for and where it's going. We have to be accountable for it. So.
I, I just assumed City Hall was taking care of it. I didn't know.
Yep. Well, they were, but it's getting all thrown into the general fund. And without any paperwork to say where it's at or what it is, it's just gonna be absorbed into the general fund. And that's it with that receipt. So, so moving forward, if anybody wishes to donate, we ain't gonna turn them away, but have them come up to City Hall and.
Right. I'll start, I'll start putting out a receipt showing the amount that I turn in.
Can we do an anonymous donation in that respect? I mean, otherwise, I mean, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, accounting principles are pretty stringent as, as far as people giving money. You gotta account for it somehow. I don't know. I mean, you can do an anonymous one, but she'd have to bring them up and tell us the dollar amount. We'd have to give Wendy a receipt or the campground. Yeah. Then she'd have to take.
But now we're taking, we're turning into a for change?
I mean.
I, I'd say just, I, I would say eliminate it. And if anybody wishes to donate, just explain to them to come see the, the girls at the office and.
Okay. I'll eliminate the box?
Yeah. Perfect. I think that'll be easier to track.
Okay.
And as far as the gazebo, the city's still looking at future. It's not gonna happen anytime soon. But it, that will, we've gotta have the funding and finances for it. So. But in the future. When? I don't know.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy the weather.
Yeah, I, I am.
I'll bet. Okay. Moving on is Suwan? No, no library director?
Didn't we need to?
You had a motion on the floor.
Oh, yeah, we did. Yeah.
Probably need to address it.
Yes.
Motion to get rid of the box.
Yes. Motion by Counselor Polis to remove the donation box at the campground.
I'll second it.
Supported by Counselor Polis, or Poten, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polis say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. My, my, my bad. Okay. Now, moving on. Paul.
All right. Just wanted to give you an update on where we are with the implementation of the new campground system. Um, so copied Jill on all of these things. Um, so we have completed all of the things that the city, that the council has approved as far as the rates and the policies and all those things. Those have all been uploaded. Um, this last week, I had the opportunity to verify that all the rates were accurately posting. Um, all of the different kind of parameters and configurations are working. Um, we had our first successful um, test, uh, reservation go through. Um, everything looked good um, in terms of how we disclose pricing and everything like that. So our next steps, um, I just got, uh, the, the paperwork um, from Jill today to submit to our credit card processor. Um, they will take about three to five business days to get the, get that all set up for us. Um, uh, and then once they give us the, the account number, we can input that into the system. And then we'll be able to start taking, uh, credit cards. Um, at that point, we're going to open it up for if any members of the council or any city staff want to assist in the testing process. Um, please, if you are interested, let Jill know. Um, and I will email you. Here's the instructions. Um, we're gonna have testing available for about one week. So if you wanna go through and kind of get a experience of here's what users will, will see, here's how you pick uh, and all that kind of stuff. If you have any questions, I'll be willing to, um, you know, let you know, like, if you, if there's a question of like, why does this work versus this work? Um, I can certainly do that. Or if you see something that just doesn't look right, um, I do encourage more people than just me to do that. The campground board will be doing some of that as. Um I do encourage more people than just me to do that. The campground board will be doing some of that as well. Um so like I said, let Jill know if you want to participate in it. I'll add you to the to the list and we're gonna do about five days of testing. Once we get that done, we will upload the hundred and sixty-seven reservations that we have for next year. They're largely Memorial Day, Fourth of July, uh Labor Day, big event weekends. Um we'll get those loaded. And then Wendy can start the process of uh being trained. Um we'll have some online training that she can go through and then if she has any questions, I'll be able to walk her through questions and answers. Um and so we are on track for opening up reservations on the fifteenth of January. Um and if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
So Wendy hasn't had any training on the system yet?
No, she hasn't had training yet. Um so once she gets set up with an account, um essentially she will call the the account rep at Firefly and set up a time based on her schedule. It's about an hour, hour and a half um of online training. They'll break her through the process and it's it should be very, very simple. If she knows how to run Camp Life, it's gonna be very simple for her to run this tool. It's just kind of this is over here instead of over here kinda stuff.
Perfect.
So wh- what's the percentage charge that they charge you to process each credit card?
Uh the the system that we'll be using uh is um I believe it was two point nine percent uh interchange fee. I think it was thirty cents per swipe. And then there's a thirty-nine dollar per month system fee and that system fee pays for the PCI co- um compliance to make sure that it's, you know, credit cards are encrypted, that you don't have any, you know, any of the security kinda stuff.
So so when somebody uses their Visa, there's normally like a three percent charge on a Visa if you're, you know, going to any store? So there's gonna be an additional four percent above the three percent that they would normally pay?
No, nope, 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 nope. That's not, that's not. So Visa, Mastercard, Discover, American Express, doesn't matter which of the four. It is two point nine percent of the total charge that they, so if they if they have a hundred dollar charge, two point nine percent of that charge. You might turn that off. Two point nine percent of that charge would be in addition. Okay, so they became basically of the total of the of the price of the sale.
Yeah.
That's two point nine percent.
Plus plus their original three percent charge that they get charged from the credit card company.
I'm not following.
Well, the credit card company charges like three percent, you know, to like a merchant or whatever.
Yes, this is what I'm talking about.
Right, yes.
Two point nine percent is the city's merchant fee.
Yeah.
That is being passed through to the consumer. So it's it's not three plus two point nine, it's two point nine. That's it.
So the credit card companies only getting their three percent that they always get. Yeah, okay.
It looks good. We should be, we should be ready for the new year.
Excellent. Thanks for the work you do on that, Paul.
Yeah.
If I may, uh I'm representing the water ed board. Uh I have three items I'd like to bring up for the council to either act on or follow through on. First question is, why was no considered, given consideration given to cost of installing electric utility to approve plumbing in the ITRB grant fund? It's gonna cost the city anywhere from probably five to twenty grand or more to run a power high. And I'm guessing out of the sky how much, but there was no provision made and I'm wondering, on the one hand, he's approved plumbing is coming to the city for reimbursement and yet the city's gonna be helped because they are mandated under state law to provide power in the city limits to customers. And Minnesota Power has a line in back of them, but that's not their jurisdiction. And NICA has over in Army ninety-five, you know, the the service areas are designated by the State of Minnesota Public Utilities Commission. And I looked it up, the best I could find is that the city all power has to be provided by the city to city customers. I have no idea what that cost is, but I'm wondering why it wasn't included in the request for infrastructure. That's the first question. The second question is when that infrastructure was run up and blacked out, where you go back to the holiday, the telephone service was cut or infringed upon or damaged and it's been three weeks and Frank's tire hasn't had full length uh telephone service and his his business depends on telephone, you know? So today I was there, he had, he has two lines and neither one worked. And did the telephone company have been sending people to look at it? They haven't traced it yet. They know where the problem is because when the contractor was digging it out, he's scarred or sheared or whatever, right where the blacktop ends. And it's laying on the ground there, now it's froze. He's been after the telephone company trying to restore power, you know, nothing's happening. And then the third item I have is I would remind the council to put out newspaper bids for uh surplus material. That's my comment from the water ed.
Thank you, Leo. Is there a reason, Sam, what's?
I never thought about, I guess I never thought about running electric with the super and water or never getting a bid on it, I I don't know. As far as uh I I know the last time with like RC, we just told RC just to go to um to power Minnesota Power, so assuming that's what we're gonna do with the approved plumbing, since Minnesota Power is right there. Instead of having to cross either the highway or come up from Hall.
But would it, wouldn't it be wise if we keep our own service cuz we're gonna profit from it? Why give it to Minnesota Power?
Yeah, I can get them, I can get a, I can get a toll to run the power up there.
Are we gonna profit though? I mean, if you're looking at, I think it's eight poles that are they now about two grand a pole.
I don't know if they would foot poles.
Be underground probably.
They'd have to go underground up here in the holiday. I can still get, I can still get a pole from Minnesota Power.
Is there any, do you know or any reason why uh the storage has Minnesota Power? Isn't that city of Gilbert?
Yes, it is, but.
The city limits of Gilbert, they are, Minnesota Power is not supposed to infringe on the city limits.
Right, right.
You know, that's the city's response.
Yep. I know at that time when RC was asking for power, the city didn't want to.
Incur the cost.
Incur the cost.
The way I look at it, if you run power underground there, you'll gain two customers. You'll gain the storage fee and approved plumbing.
Yeah.
And I would recommend for the interest of the city, long range, what, ten, fifteen years payback?
Well, I I can, I can look.
I don't know what the cost is. I have no idea.
You have to look into return investments.
It's not cheap.
Yeah.
But you'll gain two customers over fifteen years. That's revenue. You're gonna make a base rate and you have to kill lots.
Like I say, I'll I'll talk to Minnesota Powers if they need to.
Thanks, Leo. Uh Clerk Zoller?
Thank you. Um first of all, um just a couple of things, I believe, is it Troy Kofi that donated another wreath for us for the pavilion? Did I get that?
Corpi, yes.
Corpi, okay. So just to thank him for another donation, that's the second one he's given to the city. And then I also wanna thank Bob and Joy. They did all the wreaths and the decorations on the wall over there by the um library out of their own pocket, so I'd like to thank them for that as well. Um on, I don't have a whole lot of updates, just with the end of the year, we're, you know, working just to get all the information out from the internet. So I'll jump right into our financial report, which I actually printed off for you guys this town time. So campground checking account, less debits, plus our interest. Gave an ending balance of a hundred and twenty-one thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and nineteen cents. If you take the consent agenda approval tonight of twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents, that still leaves a profit in the campground fund of ninety-four thousand, three seventy-nine, eighty-one. We are still looking at a few receipts um from the contractor to send for the improvements. Not really sure uh where we'll land with what we'll get from ITRB versus our portion. Um general checking current balance as of tonight is one million, one hundred and seven thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-two, twenty-three. Uh less outstanding checks and less current payroll that we'll pull out tomorrow. Leave six hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and nineteen cents. We are looking for two reimbursements by the end of the month of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-five cents for wastewater treatment and five hundred and fifty dollars in the manhole projects will will bring us back up to seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um like Bob and I were saying, it looks like we kinda run right around eight, eight hundred thousand dollars each year to carry over to the following year for that six-month carryover. So we're sitting pretty good um compared to, at least for history. Um we still have our savings account for the wastewater treatment interim financing. We get about fifteen dollars and eighty cents in interest. So we have four hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty cents. And I get quarterly reports on our uh CD that we have is earning four and a half percent interest. We put, I think, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand in there and we get about twenty-five hundred dollars, give or take, every, it's compound interest, so it's probably more than that. But we got twenty-five hundred the first quarter. So that's earning interest for us as well.
Six months?
It's it's six months. Um I I think as we look at our financing, if we can pay for the public works truck ourselves and keep that earning interest, I don't think we're gonna see four and a half percent interest anywhere for a while. I mean, it's been a lot lower in the past year, so we're earning a good interest right now. So that's what we're striving for. Any questions?
That's good news.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to old business, the wastewater treatment plant update or water treatment, Sam?
Um the only thing I got is uh next Wednesday, Cunningham Water, it was not uh needed. And wastewater is really quickly done uh as far as running it and the improvements that are coming up next week to do the improvements um that uh we're left, you know, the data cranes and and uh the sub storage tanks are getting mostly set up. Other than that, we've finished down.
May I remind you, that does bring me up. Um I was able to finalize a date with Liz Lagard, so he will be here January third and I believe it's twelve-thirty or one. So um any of the council members, I know Sam and I believe we'll have Tara, I think our goal is to get him to walk through our wastewater treatment plant with us and if um Attorney Lindsay has time, um we'd like him to be here, I think, as well. Not detrimental that he's here, but if he can be, just so we can all walk.
At twelve-thirty?
Yes.
It was the sixth?
The third of January.
January third.
And I'm sure Faith, yeah, I'm sure Faith will reconfirm with me, you know, as we get closer, but tentatively, right now, we do have that date scheduled.
It would be a good time for Mr. Daniels to be there, Sam. Or whoever representative we're gonna have. You're talking wastewater now.
Any other issues we have or wanna, you know, any other information?
Right.
We've got him for an hour to give him anything that we just know of.
Yeah, if we could get that guy there that, you know, is gonna, maybe he can even come before this meeting with Liz Lagard. So then you have something on paper to show Liz Lagard what's gonna be needed to make that plant work properly.
Great, cuz I need a plan to go up for grants.
Right. But, yeah, let's get a hold of Peter Daniels and see if we can set that up, that, give me that number, would you, Sam, and I'll uh, I will give him a call also. And that was for the water treatment, was that the twelfth or the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth?
Twenty.
The twentieth, Wednesday, okay. All right, okay. Okay, Wednesday the twentieth, okay. Ten o'clock.
Yep.
Yeah.
Perfect. Um for the excess surplus merchandise, we already made the motion, but do we have to?
Yes, I need um exact numbers and model numbers.
Yep, I got it.
I think so, my top.
I got that email paid.
Okay.
It's in the agenda, so I gotta put it on there and pump them all and I don't know how to do the O B, but.
I'm thinking maybe my manwash people might have model numbers.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Perfect, okay.
I didn't know I needed that stuff.
No, let's, yeah. Well, we know now, we'll get her done. Perfect. Anything else, Sam?
No.
Thank you. So approved plumbing request. That's tabled?
Yep.
On to new business. Receiving donations for the holiday lighting contest. Accept donation from residents and businesses for the holiday lighting contest. City has received various donations from area residents and businesses to be used prize allocations of winners for the twenty-three holiday lighting contest. Each donation rec- recipient is given a receipt for the contribution and will be highlighted for their contribution when winners are announced.
I'll make that motion.
So motion, Councilor Polis to accept the donations.
And I'll second that motion.
Supported by Councilor Poten. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posse say nay. None, motion carries three to zero. And deauthorization to seek election judges for the twenty-four elections. Resolution approving the twenty, nope, that ain't it. Motion.
These directions, go ahead and reach out to the election judges. Maybe we have to include all the names and those who are willing to serve. But I'd like to reach out to them cuz it starts when we start wrapping up January, February, things are ready, so I'd at least get help.
And we have a list of those already to reach out to or?
Last year, so I'll call and see if there's one we can reserve. I heard from a couple, but if I could just get the official who's relevant to reach out to them.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Polis.
I'll second.
Supported by Councilor Poten to direct City Clerk Zoller to reach out to the election judges for twenty twenty-four. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posse say nay. None, motion carries three to zero. And now on to C adopt the levy and budget resolution. For resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight. Resolution approving the twenty-three tax levy collectible in twenty twenty-four. So what, resolution twenty twenty-eight. Budget recommendation for the council for twenty-three, collectible in twenty-four due to slight increase in revenue within the city of local government aid and increases enterprise fees. A zero increase to local levy for twenty-three payable in twenty-four is recommended. The preliminary levy was at thirty-four percent and adjustment to zero is recommended. Operational expenses of two million, eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and one. Debt services for sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve, library, one hundred and three thousand, five hundred, zero capital projects. Total expenses of three million, five thousand, four hundred and Total expenses of three million, five thousand, four hundred and thirteen. Revenue is estimated at two million, nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, two hundred and six. Uh, levy, zero increase. And transfer from other amounts of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seven dollars. Total revenue to twenty-twenty-three payable in twenty-four is three million, five thousand, four hundred and thirteen.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Counselor Polis, supported by Counselor Potenon to... For resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-eight, correct? Yep, thirty-eight. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, say nay, none. We have two absent, Counselor Skinsich and Counselor Heitzman. Uh, do I need roll call for that, for the ayes and roll call vote, please?
Counselor Potenon?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Polis?
Aye. Those two would say aye too.
And zero nays, absent again, Counselor Skinsich and Counselor Heitzman. So, adopted by the City of Gilbert Council, December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Yep. So, for resolution twenty-twenty-three dash thirty-nine, resolution approving the twenty-twenty-four operating budget for the governmental funds. Whereas the City Council of the City of Gilbert has repaired a budget for the operations of governmental funds for the City of Gilbert for twenty-twenty-four calendar year. Excuse me. Whereas a resolution certifying the final levy has been adopted. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Gilbert, County of St. Louis, State of Minnesota, that the operating budgets for the general fund and the debt service fund total, three million, five thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars in expenditures. Said budget may be amended from time to time throughout the year to meet the needs of the city.
Move.
Moved by Counselor Polis.
Second.
Supported by Counselor Potenon. Can we take a roll call vote?
Counselor Potenon?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Polis?
Aye.
Three ayes. Zero nays. Absent Counselor Skinsich and Counselor Heitzman. Therefore, adopted by the Gilbert City Council, December twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. And we did D already. For the amendment, so, any miscellaneous announcements? I wanna touch on Counselor Potenon and enjoy his wealth. Thank you for donating and decorating the fence.
Thanks for that.
Anything else? Do I have a motion?
Move.
To adjourn, moved by Counselor Polis.
Second.
Supported by Counselor Potenon to adjourn our City Council meeting at eight forty-two P M. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. None, motion carries three to zero. Thanks, everyone, for coming.